Council will call the minute order for the record. It is October 4th, 2022 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton, Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. First item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, we don't have any changes to consider, so I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Except as a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and to attest.
I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so with that, we will move on to item 10, Department Commission Reports. First item up is regarding the Housing Assistance Grant Program Recommendations. Mr. Miles.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here. This should be relatively quick. This is in response to the Emergency Housing Assistance Program that the council recommended funding, 250,000 of the ARPA funding to this project. So we put out a bid, as the memo states in your packet, put out a request to proposed companies. We've had two submittals. I was looking around, the scoring committee, which is made up of a couple of folks downstairs and then representative up in the mayor's office, led by Dan Torres, our new Economic Development Administrator, who will be reaching out to you all as well, just to introduce and say hello. But scoring committee recommended that the entire of the funding be allocated to Jesse Tree based on their application, primarily due to the ability to allocate all of the funding towards direct assistance and not towards personnel or anything of that related nature. So I think the memo is pretty straightforward. The recommendation is to approve the allocation or the recommendation to Jesse Tree for the entire $250,000. And I'll just stop there and take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just maybe a question for Dave, maybe on behalf of the committee, were there any, was there any feedback that came from the committee or questions that arose through the process to maybe just give counsel further thought or questions as we kind of evaluate how we want to move forth with housing attainment overall?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, no questions to my knowledge, looking around. I see Dan Torres just walked in from the scoring committee, but no questions directly towards how to solve housing assistance or emergency housing assistance beyond what this application was asking for, if that answers your question.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah, Dave, I think, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, I think that will probably maybe be an offline conversation with, with Dan or committee members. I just want to make sure that after they went through this process, if they've got recommendations for us as the council, that there's an opportunity at a later point in time to provide that to us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, and Dan's back there shaking his head yes, so absolutely welcome to those conversations and ongoing discussions around housing.
Okay, council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Dave, thank you. I know that the groups that put together the application process, that did the process and put the application together, did their very best to to write questions that were expected, but wondering if there was anything that came up that the committee talked about that wasn't anticipated as part of the application process.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, and I'll invite Dan up to speak directly about anything that he's aware of. I know the one question that came up during the recommendation period came from one of the applicants about potentially using some of their other funding to fund personnel expenses that was contributed by the city through discussions that was vetted out and not recommended because of that other program that was CDBG funds that were being asked about. And so the question was, can we use CDBG funds to fund the personnel perspective of this component, which gets into too many, crosses up too many wires and wasn't recommended and wasn't supported. That was the one question I was aware of. I see Dan's coming up as well.
Apologies for being a little bit late. No, Crystal Campbell did a great job formulating the questions and the committee was a little bit removed from the discussion with council, so we really relied on the questions and the scoring rubric. Trying to, I think the committee took into account council's desire to bring these funds as soon as possible to address the need. And so when it came down to it, both were strong candidates. Jesse Tree was able, in their application, was able to bring the money to bear sooner in the first quarter of the, the application. And then, like, like Dave said, they didn't have any administration costs on it. The concern or the request to use those funds for admin fees came after the committee had scored, which in retrospect probably wasn't the greatest communication on their part. But both had strong applications. Jesse Tree also had a more targeted approach, which was for that rent assistance, whereas Ada County Housing Authority had indicated they might use it for a couple other approved, but not what council wanted objectives.
Council, any additional questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We are able to make a motion on this tonight if council would like to proceed. There are no further questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I'll make that motion that we accept the recommendation for the grant as proposed, allocating $250,000 of ARPA funds to the Jesse Tree.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, is there discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the motion is agreed to. Thanks. Thank you, Dave, Dan, and the committee, the Councilman Hoagland. That all worked on that item. Next item up, number 11, is the 2022 Impact Fee Study Presentation. And we'll turn this over to Mr. Lavoy.
Mr. Member, or Mr. Member, geez, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, appreciate you allowing us to present to you the latest impact fee study for your consideration. We do have our consultant, Dwayne Guthrie, online. He's going to present to you a PowerPoint presentation. I think it's about 12 slides. We provided you the impact fee study and draft version to date, so that's where it's currently sitting right now. We do have three committee members here today also to assist with any questions that you may have today for the impact fee study that we present to you. Again, this is a informational presentation to you to bring you up to speed of where we are today with the latest numbers and calculations for the study. We do ask that you ask us questions either today, tomorrow, next few days. And we want to make sure that you're informed and we get all your answers, questions answered before we have the public hearing, which we will work with you on what that schedule looks like, because we need you to make sure you're comfortable with the information we are providing. So I'm going to hand this off to Dwayne, the consultant. We hired him to conduct this study on behalf of the city of Meridian. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Dwayne, but again, you have three committee members here. If you want to hear from any of them, myself, I'm happy to answer any questions as well, but for the time being, I'll hand it off to Dwayne and then we'll engage any questions at that time. Appreciate it.
Council members, this is Dwayne Guthrie. Want to run through some slides like Todd mentioned. If you have any questions, this is supposed to be a dialogue of trying to help you guys answer questions, build consensus. So please interrupt and we'll try to do that as we go through. I'm going to share my screen. Let me know when you can see that. Does it show up?
Dwayne, go ahead.
Yes.
You're good. Thank you.
Okay. So as Todd mentioned, we have to do regular updates in Idaho by, according to state law, but staff actually wanted to accelerate that schedule a little bit because of two main reasons. For one thing, your growth has been faster since 2019 than we anticipated when we did the previous study. You've added several thousand more housing units than was projected, so that was one of the main reasons. The land use assumptions that we're using in this study are shown on the graph here. So you can see the increase in projected population and housing units, and then the more linear kind of projected increase in jobs and non-residential square feet. On each one of my slides, there'll be a box like this showing where this graphic is in the report, if you want to follow along. This is actually in the back in the appendix A, so we document all the land use assumptions, all the numbers and the demographic data used in the study, and that's in the back. The second major reason for our update is that capital costs have increased significantly. So this next slide kind of goes into that. It's a lot of numbers here, but basically all of these, every row that you see here is documented by separate tables and narrative in the study itself. It's about a 40-page document, if you had time to flip through that. But basically, we're doing impact fees for three things. In green, you'll see the park and recreation improvements. In blue, we have police, which we're just focusing on buildings. And then for fire, we have both buildings and rolling stock and all the communications, radio equipment, everything like that that goes along with it. The main reason is we don't have vehicles for the police is that state law prohibits things that don't have a useful life. It's long enough to be considered a capital item, so police cars turn over too quick, and so that's why they're excluded from the study. So on, just kind of looking at the numbers, you'll see in the infrastructures columns right here, these first three columns, you'll kind of can eyeball what the standards were back in 2019 versus 2022 and how we measure those standards or quantitative basis for each one of those. And most of them, you'll see that the standards have actually increased slightly over time. You made some major improvements to fire buildings and police buildings over the last couple of years. And you've also made and had acquired an additional recreation center that, that increased those standards. One of the things that's a little different from the last study is on, we've added parkland as a specific cost component. There was a small, as you see from this footnote, a small component in the 2019 study, but land back then was only 1% of the total. And we didn't really document a standard because there was only one specific capital project to acquire a site. Now we went ahead and documented in the 22 study, a standard for land, which is about 3.14 acres per thousand residents, and a cost factor, which these are over here. And with those two things, land, new sites to be acquired with impact fees now account for about 26% of the gross cost for parks and recreation. So that's one of the major reasons for the significant increase in the proposed fees. These columns over here, these three show cost factors from 2019 to 2022. Park improvements have gone up to about 411,000 per acre. To acquire park sites, we're estimating 150,000 per acre. Recreation centers, this last time was a very conservative estimate. Now we have a much better analysis of what the future recreation centers are likely to cost. So it's $670 a square foot of building. Police buildings about the same price, $660 per square foot. Fire buildings are higher, $864 a square foot. And then you see that that small increases in the cost of rolling stock and communications and equipment down at the bottom. So one of the things the committee members requested this time is that we put in ratios of comparing cost or quantities in 2022 versus the 2019. And so it's more like a multiplier. So for instance, on park improvements, the costs now are like 1.7 times as much as they were back in 2019. And then kind of see the relative increases in cost. So significant amount increases for parks. Kind of middle of the pack for fire down at the bottom, and then also a big increase almost two times over the cost back in 2019 for police. Lot of details there. Does anybody have any questions or just basically kind of get an idea of the, what we, what we did and any questions before we proceed into the actual fees?
Mayor. That's one, Brett.
Appreciate these figures. They're mind blowing, to be honest with you. Not too terribly surprising, but just crazy. Looks like, you know, the cost factor to build these, these facilities and, you know, whether it's, whether they're improvements, land, buildings, apparatuses. What happens, obviously, right now, the cost to construct and to buy is high. And because of that, you know, these are some of the mitigating factors that are making these impact fees go up. What happens in a year or two or three when potentially costs come down? And what does that look like to our property tax or, excuse me, what does that look like with those who are building and developing?
Well, basically, you could do what, like we did this time, is you could update the study for sure. Or you could just approve a different fee schedule and lower the amount if you had documentation that the fees have actually gone down. I think the safe, the, the costs have actually gone down. I think the safer thing to do would be to actually update the study. Todd and staff can probably jump in and kind of give you a feel for the, how reasonable it is for the cost to go down. They might plateau and hopefully not go up, but I don't know about going down. If some of your department heads want to chime in on that amount, welcome their input.
I mean, with all the respect.
Councilmember.
I, I, I come from the building industry and, and right now, costs aren't going up as nearly as much as they were in the past. They're, I'm not going to say they're plateauing, but they certainly, at least in my business, I'm not getting price increases on a weekly, monthly, you know, basis like I was in, in the past. And my fear is that I don't want to overcharge or, you know, the developers and those who are, you know, investing in our city.
And I totally understand that. I know that, for instance, on lumber, lumber spiked dramatically and has now, you know, come down quite a bit. So that's one of the reasons why we want to kind of go over this with everybody and present it and make sure that we're on the right path. So appreciate that input.
Dave, I'll be quiet.
And I, Councilman, I think that this is one of the things that we've talked about doing is updating this every two years, partially for that reason alone, is due to the changing nature. I think, Todd, are we three, three years right now since the last one we did? So we're, you know, that could be one thing we do if we feel like it's, if we want to stay on top of the changes in the market as consideration. Any other questions at this time from?
Okay, I'm going to run through a couple of slides now for each.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
That's one, Perrow.
Sorry about that. Just wondering if there is an average based on geographic region or nationally for the unit, for the unit figures. So how much are there cities spending per person or per acre in relationship to what we're doing or what we have set aside? And is there a range that we should be in?
Are you asking what other cities currently charge for their impact fees?
No, so on the chart here on the screen where it's under infrastructure standard and there is a ratio for how many acres per thousand residents, how many square feet per person? And I'm wondering if there is a range which we should fall in for our city size. So are other cities spending 75 cents or, excuse me, 70 per square foot per person in other areas? Is there a range that we should be falling in?
Mr. Mayor, just, again, I'll default this to Dwayne, but Dwayne, I think you, we could say that every agency in every city and municipality has its own drivers and own goals of what they want to have as a level of service calculation. Would you say that that's the statement? Or would you say that there is a municipality average acceptable level of service calc that we should all be following?
No, there aren't any national or even regional kind of standards. Basically, each city is required to document their own standards and their own costs. And so that's why you have to have a, a custom study for like this. That accepted kind of legal practices show the need for your community, how the fee payers are going to benefit in your community, so that's tied to specific capital improvement programs. And then making sure that the fees are proportionate, which is largely due to the demographics and characteristics of your community. So that's part of the reason why, why you have to have individual studies for everybody. You could do some comparisons for the, like the Boise metro area, but then it would probably be easiest to compare the bottom line kind of fee amounts, not dive down into the detail. Everybody's going to have a different way of doing their studies.
Council, any additional questions at this point?
All right. Go ahead and continue, Dwayne.
Okay, so here's a summary chart showing the methods and the cost components. So parks and recreation is a citywide fee. It includes improvements to parks, so outdoor kind of things like ball fields, soccer fields, so types of things. The actual land for the parks and then recreation centers, it's all allocated to residential. The next two for police and fire are allocated to both residential and non-residential. They're both on a citywide basis. Like I mentioned before, we only are doing police buildings. We use functional population, which has to do with people that live and work in the city of Meridian and also the commuting patterns for your community. And then the police fees are allocated based on inbound vehicle trips to non-residential development and population on residential site. Fire fees are similar, but we use population and jobs to do the cost allocation. And like I mentioned before, we're doing rolling stock, communications and equipment for the fire facilities. So here's the capital plan for police over the next 10 years, mainly focusing on one big training center, Phase Three addition, approximately 17,000 square feet at a cost of $11.2 million. That's actually a little bit larger expenditure than we documented in the study as the growth cost due to the increase in population and, and jobs in your community are non-residential development. So the study only documents a need of $9 million to maintain your current level of service. So on this one, there's going to have to be approximately $2 million of additional funding besides impact fees to pay for that improvement. Here's the table summarizing the fee calculations. So what I just mentioned at the top was there, what we can document is the need for police buildings, approximately 13,745 square feet increase. There's the cost factor we talked about and the amount. This is the amount for me doing the study. They're allocated to each one of the fees. Here's the cost allocation, residential's paying 72%, non-residential 98%. And then we derive a cost per service unit. So in this, it's residential is persons and for non-residential, it's vehicle trips. And then here's the proposed fees down at the bottom. This residential are by size thresholds. So you can see the proposed fee is in this blue column, the current fee, the increase, which is rate from $134 for the smallest size unit up to $365 for the largest size unit. And then the ratio of the increase comparing the proposed to the current. So it's about a three-time increase, but they're small, the current fees are very small, so it's, you know, the actual dollar amounts are $1, $1 to $300 roughly per unit. On commercial, we have two categories. I mean, non-residential, we have two categories. Restaurant and retail is higher fee and then all other non-residential services, offices, those type of things fall into that other category. So the current fees are less than a dollar per square foot. The new fee increases to $1.23 for commercial. And you can see the increases, again, they're very small numbers per square foot, so the, the multipliers are pretty high, but the fees are still rough $1.23 per square foot on commercial and 19 cents per square foot for all other. Any questions on police before we go on? Okay, on fire, we went through and documented the level of service standards. And then this is the capital plan that we're looking at. At the top is kind of a summary of what's needed versus what's planned. So we're, we're matching up on the buildings, the apparatus, apparatus and equipment. We need about $3.6 million to maintain your current level of service. We're planning to spend roughly $6.6 million. So you can see the annual expenditures here. We're, we're adding vehicles, radios, ladder truck, monitors, we're designing a new station and then constructing it. And then we're adding some more equipment down here with, you know, extraction tools, thermal imaging cameras, another ladder truck, breathing apparatus. So you can kind of see all the specific expenditures anticipated over the next 10 years. And then at the end, we're designing another building and expanding, are designing expansions to buildings and expanding those buildings. So a total capital program of $25.4 million. The growth need is about 22.4 million. So on this one, again, there's a little bit of a need for outside revenue or additional revenue besides impact fees. Here's the draft fee calculations for fire. So at the top is the summary of the capital program. I just mentioned the $22.4 million. Same allocation to residential and non-residential, the cost, come up with a cost per service unit. And then the proposed fees are shown in this light orange kind of shading in the column here. On these, you can see the On these, you can see the increases are higher for residential, more like two hundred and twelve dollars for the lowest, smallest size threshold, up to five hundred and thirty dollars for the, per unit for the largest size threshold. And then the increases for non-residential, um and the, you know, less than a dollar per square foot. To come up with a similar kind of fees order magnitude as the police fire, as the, as the police fees are for non-residential. And then the final, final column on the far right are the multipliers. So roughly, you know, one point six to one point eight time multiplier or increase um over the current amount for residential and roughly twice as much for commercial. But again, there's a very small dollar amount per square foot. Any questions on the fire capital program or the draft fees? All right, last one. Parks and Recreation, their capital plan huh is kind of summarized up here at the top. Uh, we're looking at improving some sites. Uh, so the needed amount and the planned amount, they're lumpy because, you know, we have um, big, big parks, large acres. And so that some of those are just adding a additional phase or additional improvements to some of these parks that are partially complete. Um, we're acquiring new sites, um, hundred and twenty acres um over the next 10 years. And then uh looking at expanding recreation buildings by twenty-two thousand eight hundred um square feet. So kind of see the, use color to help differentiate the projects, but basically design and then you build something the next year. So we're starting off with uh Parks and Recreation building. The next big project would be Gray Cliff Park. And then we go to West Regional and then Discovery Park Phase Three. And then down at the bottom, Margaret Aldabi. And then we end up with um just a line item at the bottom over the next 10 years showing the acquisition of the, of the hundred and twenty acres. And so that's a huge component of the, of the capital program just for land itself, eighteen million dollars. So in Parks and Recreation, we're looking at a um program of seventy-one million, seventy-one point six million dollars. Um, the impact fee should bring in about sixty-six point eight million dollars. So there'll be a need for several million in additional outside funding to complete the capital program. And so here's the draft fee calculations for parks. We've got uh the three components that I mentioned. Uh, adding sites and doing improvements to the sites and then recreation buildings. So there was a um Parks and Recreation was working very hard to get things under contract and basically get rid of this um um fund balance. We weren't quite able to, to wrap that up. So there are, to zero that out. Um, so there are, is a two point three million dollar fund balance that we um took out of the fee calculations to bring that cost down a little bit. And then we allocate all those costs to um the increase in population over the next 10 years. And then you can see the proposed fees here, the current fees and the increases. So the increases for parks and recreation are much larger per housing unit, um, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars at the, for the smallest size unit. An increase of almost uh three thousand ninety-seven dollars for the largest size threshold. And the ratios here are about two and a half times, two, two point two to two and a half time increase over that, what they were in twenty nineteen. Any questions on parks? Before we wrap up, I have one summary slide that puts all the three fees together. Okay, well, here's the, the grand total then of the draft fees for the, each of the fees that we walked through, you can see the relative amounts here and how much they contribute to the total. Here's the twenty nineteen total. So we're looking at a significant increase. A column here, one thousand five hundred and eleven dollars um from the smallest units up to three thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars for the largest size threshold. Um, multipliers for residential are in the range of, of two to two point four times as much as they were uh back in twenty nineteen. And then the increases for non-residential, uh, sixty-nine cents a square foot for all other types of non-residential, a dollar sixty-four a square foot for restaurants and retail. So those multipliers are roughly two and a half to two point eight um six times the amount from the twenty nineteen. So that concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any other questions or we can get input from the committee members or department heads that they need to um help clarify things.
Thank you, Dwayne. Uh, council, any questions for Dwayne at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
Dwayne, appreciate you walking us through uh the slides. I guess I've got kind of a holistic question. Since we've last done one of these studies, the city has brought on a golf course as well as a swimming pool. And I'm just curious, did those additions have any impact in terms of what our future impact fees could be? And what ultimately drives that?
Well, it's a combination of things and they're kind of complicated. Um, basically those are kind of unique things that we have to decide whether the city wants like an additional pool. Um, that's a huge operating and maintenance cost. You know, that's a very big commitment to commit to do that. The impact fees are just going to pay for the capital side of things. They cannot help out with any operating and maintenance costs. It's like, you know, we can't pay for public safety officers. We can't pay for um maintaining the pool and operating it and things like that. So um, I, we thought that the, I think staff can help clarify, you know, kind of the thinking on that. But one big concern was um, are we willing to or do we want to add another pool or not? Uh, we, at this time with the other increases, I think the kind of consensus was, wasn't a good idea. Um, also, same thing with golf course. It's kind of a, a different animal than, you know, like a traditional park with ball fields and basketball courts and those kind of things. So it probably should be its own separate category. A lot of communities, it gets complicated on how you operate those things because a lot of times they're done as an enterprise operation, you know, like their own cost control center, almost like a utility might be. And so that's another consideration. Uh, how does that affect the fees and are not? So basically the pool and the golf courses are not in, in um the proposed amount and not driving the proposed amounts.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you. Uh, Dwayne, just double check to answer Luke's question about the impact or the influence that the pool and the golf course have. Again, the, the actual pool and actual golf course did not have an impact on this cost of loved or level of service calc. But I believe on the park side, we did add the pools opportunity of the building square footage space into our calculations, which did help the city. I believe that's on page eight of the impact fee study. We did actually add that available space because we did figure that that's available to our public for a normal day in use. But the pool, the water facility itself and the actual green golf course, I agree with you, Dwayne. That did not influence the calculations of level of service. Um, am I wrong with, right or wrong with that statement?
You're right. And that is on page eight. I'm looking at it now. Um, it's um figure PR three. So the, the new community center that you acquired was one of the reasons why the level service went out from last time. And that is in there. The building, not the.
Cool piece. Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Dwayne.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Uh, I have a question about the um square foot ranges that were used and the expectation that the largest um range would come from homes built between twenty-five hundred and thirty-two hundred square feet and that 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 data was from the Cessor from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. Um, obviously that's information that's even older than our last impact fee study. So I'm wondering if there was a way to get more recent information, um, either from our planning department on the sizes that have been, sizes of um single family that have been approved in the last four years. Uh, my expectation is, is that it's, it's more along the seventeen hundred to twenty-five hundred foot range. And I have concerns that, that, that using that um that square footage range is, is not accurate.
Well, over time, the, the um, the market doesn't vary that much. There are some slight, you know, fluctuations on the average of size of units over time. Basically homes have gotten bigger over time. Everybody's kind of aware of that. Uh, we didn't think there would be um that much variation from the um from the previous study for the size ranges. We did look at, uh, ask staff to get us data for the actual fees oh, um, for two complete years. The um, and we looked at where the, it's kind of a more or less a bell shaped kind of curve. Like you said, the middle, middle of the pack range is seventeen hundred and twenty-five hundred is where most all the units were at. And then the, the bell shaped curve kind of falls off on both the small units and the larger units. Um, so I don't have those actual percentages in front of me, but you're right. Most of the, most of the units are in that mid-range. We did make some slight adjustments to the smaller size thresholds because we weren't capturing very many units. And those is trying to kind of balance out the, the bell shaped curve and um, but um, it really didn't affect the fee calculations because everything like on the residential fees are, are calculated per person um, based on the population of the city. And so this allocation just is done based on the demographic analysis of the average number of uh people on the different size thresholds. So it didn't change, wouldn't change the dollar amount. It just um would change kind of the relative payment for the size thresholds. I, I mean, doesn't change the revenue to be collected, the total revenues received. It just affects the, the, you know, the amount paid from the top into the lower.
Counsel, additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
Um, all of this data extremely interesting, certainly find it interesting. Um, the question um that follows is, you know, this, this sets the, the statutorily permissible cap, like the maximum amount of impact fees in these categories that we could choose to assess on our uh new development. Did the committee's work include any recommendation? Um, understanding this is the maximum allowed for the council to consider when implementing new fees?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Joe, I can answer that. And we also do have three members here to uh answer that for you as well. That topic was discussed. Uh, we did consider uh, uh, staging plan, a, a spread, a smoothing plan. And at the end of the conversations, the committee decided to present to you the numbers that you have in front of you. Uh, we felt that since if we're going to do this on every two to three year basis, a smoothing plan would be, I guess, uh, would not work because then you would just be removing the plan after two to three years.
Right.
Um, so this discussion was had, you do have three committee members. If you wish to talk to them or if any of the three committee members wishes to give a comment, but that discussion was had, was there a staging plan? Or a rollout plan at this moment in time, the committee has presented to you what they believe is in the best interest of the city?
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
That's a great point, Todd. The, the more compressed um, visit to the impact fees helps. I know in previous years we've taken um partial increases, knowing that we could bring it in over time. But um, really, I, it's just when we get to that decision, it's a policy consideration that any decision to to um apply less than what's been presented today is a policy decision of not having growth pay for itself, but having existing taxpayers pick up a growth related expense. So that is the crystal clear trade-off policy consideration. If we were to choose to take anything less than what the presentation today says is the actual growth related costs. So I, I appreciate that input.
And Todd, just out of, in case you haven't, do we know how many of the past ones we have not taken the full amount?
Mr. Mayor, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I think at least the last, the last one in twenty nineteen, we, you, the council did ask us to do a revised version of it. I think the version before that, we had maybe one year, we did a staged effect, but I would have to go back and find the exact exact numbers. I apologize.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, Councilman Bourne brings up the point and um, I'm trying to remember my years as staff to see how many times they chose to take the full one versus not and um what those numbers have been. Uh, I know I asked you to run some calculations based upon comparing the impact fee to the residential value um over the years. And, and this, this would far exceed any number of percentage of value in homes. Um, twenty eleven was the year that we were at one point, one point one percent of the value with our impact fee. And this would put us at one point one nine. Um, we've been as low as point five nine and we've had an average of point eight two. So I think that there's a, a wide variety of, you know, looking at this and approaches that previous councils have taken. So I think it's a, it is a great conversation. Um, or uh, some dogs to figure out for us. As, as the case may be, but uh, it, yes, how much of growth should pay for growth versus other? Great policy conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So I wasn't on council when the last impact fee study was discussed and approved. I want to understand the implementation of the information. Um, the differences between what is estimated in the CFP and what the study says we would um generate for revenue. Um, is there an expectation that the general fund, again, another policy question, that the general fund would bridge that gap? Or that the CFP would be, the departments would adjust the CFP and potentially remove some of the items um, that were, that were expected to have complete or a combination? And how did that potentially change from what was expected in two thousand nineteen to what was actually done in the last three years?
Mr. Mayor, Jessica, I can answer that for you. So when we were last presented to you in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the study did represent that there was going to be a shortfall that was going to be covered by the general fund. And when we do our annual CFP, we calculate the expected revenues and the expected fund balances. And over the past three to four years, as we've reported, uh, the general fund has had excess revenues. So therefore the excess revenues have been our, I guess, our uh fail-safe to make sure that the impact fees and the projects in there are fundable. But again, this is something we do every year with the CFP balancing act and the annualized budget process. We make sure we have the funds available for all projects. And if the project is inside the um, impact fee study, it's not guaranteed. It's just, you know, uh, it's our guide. And we do this every two to three years. So therefore we can't really get too far behind the eight ball on this because we're always addressing the capital needs and our fun, our funding needs on a two to three year basis. So I think that's our protection is we just touched this so many times uh every year and every three years with the study uh update. So I believe that's how we protect ourselves. If you didn't do this for every five years, then I can see your concern that, hey, there is a shortfall. There is no funding. But I think since we manage this to the level that we do, we're able to protect ourselves from any funding shortfalls.
Mr. Mayor, one more question in that regard.
Councilman Pearl.
Um, I haven't recently looked at the two thousand nineteen impact fee study. What, what was the difference between what was estimated? Um, for revenues and what was estimated for the CFP at that time and what actually played out? So in this situation, twenty twenty, the fire department, uh, general fund would fund approximately three million, three million dollars difference. Um, what was? What was quoted in two thousand nineteen and what was the actual difference in, in what has, I realized that realizing that the parks department still has some funds to be used, but fire and police have used all of theirs. So how far off were we in the two thousand nineteen study from what was actually spent?
Or Mr. Mayor, Jessica, the answer, I don't have that data at my fingertips, but we can inform you that the uh, as an example, so we're building a ten-year plan here. The impact fee is a ten-year model that we're presenting to you. In the twenty nineteen model that we presented to you, you had two fire stations spread over ten years. In ten years, we would collect the funds necessary to build the two stations. But in previous conversations, the council and the executive members have decided to expedite the second station. So therefore what we had in the model is really at a moot point now because we've deviated from the model uh from that standpoint. So to say, did we collect enough revenues to cover the expenditures that we um identified in the twenty nineteen study? I could say yes and no at the same time because we changed the approach to what our timing was on the uh, construction of those two stations as an example. Um, but Um, but to answer your question, I would have to run an analysis to show you exactly uh for every single year, this is what we expect in revenue and this is what we show, uh, no different than what we do in the um impact fee study from a proposal, I can, I just have not done that from an actual analysis to show you the variance of what we guessed and what we actually saw. My guess is we're going to have more revenues than we expected because permit sales are exceeding what we believe. I mean, this year alone, we've done fifteen hundred multifamily permits, which we had no uh, we weren't, we had five hundred as our projection. So again, things like that, the, the, the construction here is still exceeding our growth projections in our modeling. Um, but again, I, I'm happy to do that, I just don't have the exact answers for you at my fingertips.
Thank you.
And just to piggyback on that a little bit, the, I think one of the things is we do use more general fund. It helps with our level of service, which actually can put more into what the impact fee should be for the future. Um, I'm not going to say that's what happened this time around, but that could be an outcome that happened that does result into what the impact fee is. Um, but it still comes down to a policy decision about how council wants to collect for growth and what, at what percentage. Councilman Holland.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a comment about this, I, I appreciate the work that Todd and and Dwayne and your firm put into this because these, these are, and then the committee, these are important numbers and uh yes, it is a little bit of crystal ball looking in the future, and as you pointed out, Todd, you know, collecting over ten years and then we move things and have to do things quicker. Uh, you know, it, it makes it complicated, but uh it does allow growth to pay for vast majority of things that, that we need, that growth requires, and so uh that's where we want to be, and we want to be doing it the right way, of course, within the state statutes and uh don't want to run afoul of that, so just appreciate all the effort that goes into this and the work and uh and then uh I guess from, we'll take it from there.
A- and I think one of the reasons why I want to make sure before we notice the council heard this information, if there's any desire by council at this point in time to notice something less than what is being recommended by the committee for your public hearing to have that conversation now, otherwise notice of what's been recommended by the committee, and then you can obviously take public feedback before you make any uh determination, but I consider this a little bit like the budget, you know, no more that you got to put, you can't go, you shouldn't go up once you notice something else, I'm not saying you couldn't if you decide not to do it, but you know, what number would you like to notice to the community for public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I, my perspective i- is it clearly needs to be what's presented, it needs to be the maximum. Um, I think it, it accurately identifies the true capital cost of um of growth in order to maintain the level of service, that's what the public at least needs to be informed of. Um, and we should hear feedback based upon that. That'd be my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holland.
Yeah, I, I agree with that approach, I, I, I think we do have to look at it as of growth paying for its way, are there repercussions to that in terms of affordability and things like that that we've talked about? Yes, but at the same time, I, I think we need to present it to the public saying, okay, this is what we're looking at, and let them provide us uh their insights on, on what that does and whatnot and uh and see what the trade offs are, but I, I agree with Councilman Borden.
Anybody disagree? Okay, I see no one who disagrees with that, so I think Todd, that gives you the direction for
Mr. Mayor.
Lucy, uh, Councilman Pearl.
Sorry about that. Uh, not necessarily disagreement, but just want to, to get some clarity. Um, the perks building that was in the study, um it, I, I don't, I don't see that as being something that's, that's caused by growth that, that's just caused by growth, I see that as something that really is a benefit. Um, not just a benefit, but that is, has been a long time coming, far before any of the new re- new residents that would purchase a property or new commercial buildings that would be built in the next ten years. And so that being said, it's unlike the police and fire stations that really are truly a result of having an increased population. Um, and so in that regard, I just have concern that our future residents are paying for something that um is not just caused purely by an increase in our populate, the need for it is not caused purely by an increase in our population. So I don't know exactly, I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not saying that um that, that I've made a determination in terms of um you know, the, the increase in um fees per unit. But that's just something I, I'd like to chew on someone.
Would the chief like to come up and at least I, I've had similar questions and his answers have satisfied for me, but we'll see if they do it for you.
Thank you, Mayor Simison, members of the council. So this facility actually is pretty much totally driven by growth. Um, what we're looking at doing is remove, putting in our locker rooms uh to create more space in our main campus so that as we hire more officers, we are able to uh keep that main campus viable. And this is one of those things that does that as well as uh provides uh briefing space for our officers in that main campus as well. And May, hopefully, our plan is to potentially avoid having to build a south precinct. Uh, because the location for where the south precinct where we were looking at is only approximately seven miles away from our main campus, so rather than add that additional cost, uh, we think that we can do that by building this facility on our main campus.
It's a little less than seven miles.
Little less than seven.
Yeah. Anyway, just, I don't know if there's more question, it, it is, I, I would describe it more as space for officers than other purposes based upon our conversation anyways.
Yeah, the reason it's mentioned is the third phase of the training uh facility is because it is on the campus of the training facility right there.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Thank you, I apologize if I misspoke, I was referring to the twenty two thousand square foot parks building that's um, yeah, not the, the
Okay.
Yeah.
He's coming up next, there you go.
But that was very good information.
I was happy to let Tracy, you know, be, speak for me, but uh, so um, I can see that there, the why you would say that there is already a need for community center uh with the existing population. Uh, what we're doing in the uh impact fee study though is determining what the growth eligible square footage of new building is, and with the existing buildings that we have uh primarily at home court and the existing community center and then the, the space that was already mentioned at the pool. Um, it, it makes the L, the eligible square footage for future growth at twenty two thousand square feet. Now, if council decides that, you know, we want half of that community center to come from general fund because it meets existing uh population needs, it would, it would free up that much building impact fee for other buildings, whether it's a future satellite community center, ten years out, or I mean, who, who knows what, I don't have uh specific designs on that or an expansion of the uh uh maintenance facility, I mean, uh, those kind of buildings could come into play, but what this does show is the full community center is at least impact fee eligible. Beyond that, the council can decide policy wise how much they want funded by impact fee versus general fund versus whatever. But the full square footage is at least impact fee eligible. Is that answer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Yes, it does, and perhaps I misunderstood the question, but I thought the question was not so much which is being funded by general fund or which is being funded by impact fees, but it's more of, does the city collect all of the impact, the eligible impact fees? Um, and so that's, it's really more about, do we collect this full amount per unit? Um, and so to um to Mr. Sidaway's point, you know, let's say that we do decide that we're only going to use half of the impact fees collected for the community center and the other half come from the general fund, well, then if you collect the full amount that's estimated for the next ten years, then you know, perhaps that will go toward a future building for the parks and recreation that we haven't yet anticipated. But is that, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand the fairness element to the folks who currently live in our community versus the ones who will um, who, who will cover that cost in the next ten years. So forgive me for my simple questions, but this is my first go around with this impact fee study conversation.
Mr. Mayor, um for me, part of the fairness element comes from the fact that we don't wait ten years to redo the, the, the study. It will be recalculated in that three ish year horizon. You know, one of the struggles I'll just point out now because it'll uh save me this, you know, it won't, probably won't save me from having this conversation with you three years from now, but let's, you know, with the rapid repeat of the um of the impact fee studies, it is difficult for us to build major facilities in that timeframe. So for just looking at parks as, as a lone element in that, you know, if we can't build the next major park in the next three years, and I'm telling you right now, we probably won't, given that we will be focused on the community center as our next major project, our acres per thousand will likely come down in the next study if uh so it's just a, and that's part of why we were, you know, we held out this year so we could get discovery park phase two underway um a- as, as part of this impact fee studies calculation, so but the fairness comes in the fact that it is redone regularly and uh I think one la- last kind of related point I'd like to make, just because I've done a lot of thinking about the impact fees myself oh recently is the question that was asked earlier about, you know, how much more did we make from the twenty nineteen study than was calculated? My take on that was, we didn't make a penny more. It just came in faster. You know, the amount came in exactly at the rate per unit as was adopted. But the units came in faster than projected, so it did it, it did come in faster, but it was still the, the exact dollars per unit that were projected, so with that, thank you.
And, and Todd, I guess a, a question for you. I assume that the committee could choose to only look at certain elements of the impact fee in future years. If we didn't want to change the park and we only wanted to reevaluate fire and police, for example, are those options that, that can be considered, or are you required to do them all at the same time and update them all the same appropriate, just out of curiosity?
Mr. Mayor, good question, I'm gonna and see if Dwayne or maybe even Bill, you guys might know the answer to this, I I'm thinking you have to open up the whole study and do the whole thing, Dwayne, do you have any guidance? Have you done a partial study opening um in the past?
Um, usually you go ahead and do all the fees just because the demographics change or projected rates of development change and things like that, so all those kind of basically denominators and your formulas all get adjusted, so usually go ahead and, and do all the fees. The state requires you to do a, a update at least every five years. Um, so you couldn't go longer than that, but you, I think there's good wisdom in doing it every two to three years. I, I sure it comes across as a consultants make work kind of thing, but it, it is a kind of a, a necessary component because you do have to show that the fees are needed and they're benefiting folks and that they're made proportionate, so you just can't, you know, look around at other communities and charge what they're charging, you have to kind of go through the documentation for your specific community.
So maybe that's a question we can at least explore to know the answer, I'm not saying it's the right one, I just think it's a if it's relative to the situation of impacts the things that take longer to build because we are updating what that, what we would want to do or not in the future, just so we have an understanding, our council has an understanding. Counsel, any additional questions or comments? Okay, well then we will, you will be seeing this notice and brought back for a public hearing. Do, Mr., well, we have a date set that you plan on doing this for public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, if we can notice this in two weeks, we'll work with legal to make sure we're meeting uh the requirements, work with the city clerk to make sure we're meeting the noticing requirements. We'll follow the earliest Tuesday we can find that is available on everyone's schedule, unless we hear differently.
You should be seeing that in two to three weeks. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
I would move that we adjourn the work session.
A motion to adjourn all in favor, signed by by Saint I.
I, I.
Praise the, guys, have it, we are adjourned.
Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record is October 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll begin this evening's city council meeting with the roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt, Councilwoman Burrow, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borden, I don't see, Councilman Hoagland, Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time it's the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Exciting. The scene is a community invocation, which will be delivered tonight by Brent McCurdy with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. If you would like to come forward and if you'd like to join us in the invocation, or if you'd like to take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Mr. McCurdy, yes?
Our Father in Heaven, with gratitude in our hearts this evening, we're so happy here. Thankful for the opportunity to have living in such a wonderful city of Meridian. Peace and the safety that we feel here. Thankful for the wonderful citizens of Meridian who care so much, one for another. We recognize, Father, that there are those that are less fortunate in the community. Bless each of us that we might be ever vigilant and seek them out to help them in any way that we might. For Mayor Simison and for our city council, we'd ask a special blessing to be upon them. Difficult issues that they may be struggling with, please bless them with extra insight. Might make those decisions which are in the best interest of the community and the citizens of Meridian. We thank the Father for our first responders, for our policemen, for our firefighters, for our EMTs. We'd ask that I protect you, Pam, might be over. We recognize, Father, that there are many in the world who are suffering at this time. We'd ask a special blessing to be with them, and strengthen them, particularly those in Florida that have lost so much. We'd ask that each of us, even if we do just a little to help, please help us if we might do that. We pray this evening, Father, for peace, peace in our homes, peace in this wonderful community.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it. Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda's published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signed by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the agenda is adopted. This clerk, we have anyone to sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to item one, which is proclamation for fire prevention month proclamation. If Pam, if you would join me at the podium. Well, it's that time of year again where we're going to see prevention, Pam, down here. And we're always excited for this to bring attention to the issue of fire prevention. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the proclamation, turn this over to you because you do this much better than I do to talk eloquently about all this going on here in the city of Meridian and with the work that you and the team does. So whereas the city of Meridian is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both nationally and locally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas Meridian's first responders are dedicated to reduce the occurrence of home fires and related energy injuries through prevention education. And whereas Meridian's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire. And whereas this year marks 100 years of fire prevention education and this year's theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively reinforces the critical importance of developing a home escape plan with all the members of the household and practicing it regularly. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simison, hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Fire Prevention Month in the city of Meridian and call upon the community to heed the important, important safety message of Fire Prevention Month and take time to build, review, and practice a fire escape plan with your family dated the October 4th, 2022. So on behalf of myself and the city council, present this proclamation to you for the work that you all are doing and would love to hear more about those efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is Fire Prevention Month. It's always an exciting time. It's always a busy time. It's a time when I expect that none of us will have a voice directly after the education efforts that we're going to be doing in the city. The, we are currently right now scheduled to go into almost every single school in the city. It's exciting that we have the opportunity to do that again. And we're bringing this fire prevention message out to members there in the schools as well, hoping that the children will bring this message to their families. Additionally, we do have an open house. It's called Public Safety Day. That's this coming Saturday. That is a, an event that we hold with the Meridian Police Department, a joint event where we invite the community to come in to fire station number one and learn everything that they can about safety. I'm not only this particular message for Fire Prevention Month, but also things that the police department would like to provide as well. We have partnered up again this year with Domino's Pizza and Domino's Pizza is going to be offering free pizza for people who have operational smoke alarms. And so you'll see some of your fire engines possibly going behind a Domino delivery driver and checking smoke alarms where we'll have the opportunity to either give free pizza or fix smoke alarms. So that's really awesome in that. And additionally, we're still doing our, and we are doing again this year, our poster contest for all of the students from kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade. And two lucky classrooms are going to get a pizza party with the firefighters. Again, that is to put this message right directly into the homes because generally those posters are done in the home. And if we can encourage families to have a home escape plan and to practice that plan at least twice a year, it's a good time when you change the batteries in your smoke alarm. We can establish children and families that can live should they have a fire in their home. Fires happen. Fires in the home happen more frequently now. And unfortunately, because of what's in the home, they're burning faster, much faster. So Sparky was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately he is supporting firefighters over in Kuna. They have a fire out there and so we have a lot of our engines out there right now. And so he couldn't be here, but he did send a couple of suckers here for everybody. And those suckers tell everybody have two ways out of every single room. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Appreciate it.
I know I saw at least on social media earlier the smoke in the air down in Kuna. So hopefully I've not heard any more to hopefully people down there are safe from whatever is occurring. For the record, it looks like Councilman Borden has joined us. I don't know exactly what time, but I assume our clerk got up, but he is here for the record. So with that, we will move on to our action items for the evening. First item up is a public hearing for water and wastewater assessment fee adjustments. Turn this over to Mr. Freitag. Did you get your sucker?
But I will make sure I do before I leave. Don't worry. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to talk to you about assessment fees. The Public Works Department has recently just concluded a review and analysis of these fees. And so we've got some updates that we are proposing for your consideration this evening. Chris, do you have that presentation? You do have this information in your packets, but I'm just going to quickly run you through. We thought it would take just a minute to refresh everybody's memory on what these fees are, how they're calculated, what the numbers came out to and entertain any questions you may have. So it's been about six years since the Public Works Department has updated these fees. So we're due. Two main outcomes that we wanted to make sure we aligned with were to ensure that the fees align with Idaho state law, obviously, so that they're legally defensible and that they are up to date with our system specifics. So our calculation methodology.
Didn't receive it via email, so I'm trying to locate it for you.
I'll start to talk you through it anyway, and if they can get the presentation up there, we'll go with that. So the calculation methodology is very simple and it's very formularic. We essentially, for whichever utility we're looking at, we take the current system replacement value. So that's the value of all of our assets on our asset list. We back out anything from an unfunded depreciation perspective and debt. Obviously, the city of Meridian carries no debt, so that's, that's a non-issue. We divide that number by our system capacity. That's how much water we can supply to our customers. What that essentially does is it gives us a commodity value. That commodity value is a certain number of dollars per gallon of water. We know what an ERU, equivalent residential unit in the city of Meridian is equivalent to. We multiply that commodity value by the ERU value. That gives you your fee. So our current fee on the water system is $1,973. The proposed fee based on our new analysis is $1,514. So that fee actually goes down a little bit. A little counterintuitive to what you might expect. Over the last six years, we have added significant assets to our list. However, it's a simple division problem and those assets have bought us more in terms of capacity than what the value of the assets are. So the fee goes down a little bit. All right. So that's how that, that works. Essentially, good news for, for everyone. I do, we did have some comparison charts and if you're looking at those, those information in your package, you'll see where that kind of puts our overall fee in terms of our neighboring municipalities. We're on the lower end of that, that list. I always kind of caution people, it is an apples and oranges comparison when you're talking about system fees from one city to another, because obviously all of the factors that go into that are different. System size and capacity and age and all that. But still, it does give you kind of an interesting look at where we compare on those. So on the sewer side, the fee goes up. So it's the exact same calculation. Current system replacement value divided by current system capacity. Our existing system fee for that is $3,884. The new calculation is $5,411. So fairly significant increase on the sewer side. Again, not surprising. We have added an immense amount of assets to the asset list on that. Most customers, of course, connect to both systems at the same time. So when you factor the reduction in the water fee, the increase in the sewer fee, it is just over a thousand dollar increase to the overall fee that a customer will be paying when they connect to our utility systems. So so just sort of a quick summary on how the fees are calculated, what the new numbers are. I will mention that we did do a little bit of outreach. We talked to the Building Contractors Association prior to coming to you with all this, just to kind of give them a heads up on that. So they've been informed of this information. And really just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on what we were looking at on this. So I'll stand for questions if you've, if you've got any.
Thank you, Alex. Council questions for staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks. No questions. Just Alex, appreciate the memo getting that to us early. I think that laid out everything you covered here tonight and I appreciate the calendaring. So you kind of know what the, the steps in the process looked like. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And again, I do appreciate the work and the outreach as well. And that I know that that's appreciated as well by our partners out there in the development community.
Thank you.
Yeah. With that, item three on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, close the public. Oh, I'm sorry. I appreciate, sorry. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Or actually, I should say, are there others here who would like to provide testimony on this item at, at this time? Or if you're online, you can use the raise your hand feature. We do have people online this evening. If you'd like to provide testimony, we can bring you in for comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Move that we close the public hearing. Second, the motion.
Have motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed. Next item is item three, resolution number 22 dash 23 dash 44.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we approve, approve resolution 22 dash 2344, updating our water and wastewater assessment fees.
Have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 22 dash 2344. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burnt, Burrow,
Aye.
Cavanagh,
Aye.
Wharton,
Aye.
Moogland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and the resolution is agreed to. Have a good night. Next time up is a public hearing for Linder Village South, SHP 2022 dash 0012. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. This one and the two action items for me tonight are kind of brother, sister, cousins of each other. So there'll be very similar information. This one is for the larger parcel. The site consists of 13.4. This one is for the larger parcel. The site consists of 13.4 acres of land. Currently is on CC. It is part of the Linder Village project off of Linder and Chindon, as you can see by the image here. A lot of history on the site is in the mixed-use community designation as part of other properties in this area. The proposed short plot is to subdivide an existing commercial lot into four commercial building lots for ownership purposes. Existing lots are within the center of the overall development and has public road frontage along West Orchard Drive, which is along the south boundary. It also has two little connection points here, which are just dry-bile connections. There are existing approvals on lot two and three on the site, which is this lot and this lot. This is the Linder Village Library, and then there's a Market West building that was approved here. Future sites with, actually, future buildings within this site will require administrative approvals, and staff will review those at the time of those submittals. There is an existing cross-parking and cross-access agreement for the property and for the overall project that these subject sites will also be part of. I did include a condition of approval consistent with that, and the applicant is in agreement with all conditions within the staff report as well. The submitted landscape plan was for the whole area, because again, all the internal parking lot landscaping will be taken care of and reviewed upon the future administrative approvals. The landscape buffer along Orchard Park Drive is currently installed, and the road is currently complete. Staff has reviewed the plat for compliance with the UDC and within the regulations in the CC zoning district, and staff finds that it is compliant. This is an exhibit I asked applicant to create to kind of just ensure that the existing approvals, which would be 14B here and C, weren't going to make their buildings not compliant with the proposed lot lines. So this showed me that they're going to meet all the setbacks, because there are no setbacks in CC, et cetera, and we're not putting a lot line under a future building. So after that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Okay. Say your name and address. We recognize for 15 minutes.
Cam Scott, 5725 Discovery Way in Boise. Thank you, council, and thank you, Joe. I think Joe summarized the project pretty accurately. Like he said, we are in agreement with all of staff's conditions. I am here to stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, council. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, we have anyone signed to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up. If there's anyone present that would like to provide testimony on this application, if you could come forward now or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Seeing no one raising their hand or coming forward, would the applicant like to make any final comments? They're waving their final comments, so council, have motion to close the public hearing.
Councilman Burt, I move that we close the public hearing. Second the motion.
Have a motion second to close the public hearing. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Move that we approve item number SHP-2022-0012. Second the motion.
Have motion and a second to approve item SHP 2022-0012. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burt.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Wharton.
Aye.
Holborn.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Next item up is public hearing five for Linder Village West, SHP 2022-0011. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this is the other piece of this puzzle. It's a same overall project, Linder Village. It is along the west boundary, though, directly along Linder and then West Orchard Park Drive along the south side. Same information as previously, except that this is a two-lot subdivision on approximately two and a half acres. Again, currently is on CC. The existing roadways are constructed to their full widths, and the required landscape buffers to Linder, sorry, and Orchard Park Drive are existing and constructed. Again, this is the general location. This would be the overall concept plan. The property on the north half has already been approved CCC and design review, and about half of the parking, as you can tell, so the south half is the concept plan of sorts. But again, future administrative approvals will, staff will analyze any parking and circulation requirements. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? I'd like to come forward.
Hello again.
Say your name and address for the record.
Cam Scott, 5725 Discovery Way in Boise. Joe's two for two tonight on great descriptions of the project, so I don't have anything to add to that, but I am willing to stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Joe's about a thousand, huh?
Today only.
Not bad.
Especially on the day when Judge hits number 62, so maybe this will go down as Joe's day. Sorry.
Hit the broadside of a Mars.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Not a question for Mr. Scott, but just a feedback. So we have received some requests from the public to update information about the progress of Orchard Park. And I noticed on the website that there hasn't been anything posted since last fall, 2021. So just wondering if you can encourage the folks that you represent to maybe add some more information to social media and/or the website, just as a kindness to the public.
Absolutely. We'll share that and feedback with our client.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or comments? Okay, all right. Mr. Clerk, we have anyone sent to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, is there anybody present that would like to provide testimony on this item in the room or online? Seeing no one raising their hand or coming forward, and do have motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we close the public hearing. Second the motion.
Have motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we approve item number SHP-2022-0011. Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve item SHP 2022-0011. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burt.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Wharton.
Aye.
Holborn.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next item up is item six, which is ordinance number 22-1998. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's an ordinance annexing the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 27, Township Four North, Range One West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning 4.96 acres of such real property from RUT, Rural Urban Transition, to R4, Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District, directing city staff to alter all use and area maps, as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries and the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho City Tax Commission as required by law, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
First, let me say I would 100% support a Bring Your Dog to Council night. I'd bring mine. I move that we approve ordinance number 22-1998.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Rosie and I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second and a half for third. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burt. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Wharton.
Aye.
Holborn.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, the ordinance is agreed to. Next item up is item seven, which is order number 22-1999. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance annexing the northwest one quarter of the northeast one quarter of Section 33, Township Three North, Range One East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning 2.95 acres of such real property from RUT, Rural Urban Transition, to CC, Community Business Zoning District. 13.38 acres of such real property from RUT, Rural Urban Transition, to R8, Medium Density Residential Zoning District. And 24.17 acres of such real property from RUT to R15, Medium High Density Residential Zoning District, directing the city engineer to alter all use and area maps, as well as the official zoning maps and official maps depicting the boundaries and the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho City Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22-1999.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve orders number 22-1999. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burt. Perrow. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Wharton.
Aye.
Holborn.
Wolf.
I'm aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Oh, I'm gonna, can we screenshot this and post it on Meridian Cat Park? Because I think that they're going to be really, really upset. Next item up is ordinance number 22-2000. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just getting that screenshot.
Good boy, Todd.
This is an ordinance annexing portions of APNR 703900005 and APNR 703900300. Ada County Records located in a portion of Government Lot Six of Section Six Township Three North, Range One East, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A and rezoning 1.36 acres of such real property from RUT to R40 zoning district, and rezoning an area of land being APNR 703900170 and portions of APNR 7039000090, APNR 703900080, and APNR 7039000057. Ada County Records located in a portion of Government Lot Six of Section Six Township Three North, Range One East, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit B, rezoning 4.18 acres of land from CG Zoning District to R8 Zoning District. Zoning District and R8 Zoning District to R40 Zoning District, directing city staff to alter all use and area maps, as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries and zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho City Tax Commission as required by law, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22-2000.
Have a motion and a second to approve orders 22-2000. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burt. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Wharton.
Aye.
Holborn.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, the ordinance is agreed to. Council, anything on our future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.